I would like to call the meeting of the Halifax Elementary School Committee to order on May 8th at 5:32 PM. Thank you, Area 58, for filming or setting up to film tonight. We always start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled at this time to speak publicly? Okay? I need a motion to approve the regular minutes from April 3rd, 2023.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2023.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Aye? All right. Mr. Tur- where is he? He's down there. Mr. Turcot, you're up.
So there are obviously different contracts under the community for nutritional workers, custodians, paraprofessionals, and the school committee has the authority to decide on substitute rates. I think there's been a longstanding past practice of tying the substitute rate for nutritional workers and custodians in Halifax to be step one rate in the contract, but that has never actually been codified, to my knowledge, or learned upon. That's basically been our line of business memory. So I'm here tonight to ask the school committee to consider officially linking rates for substitute custodians and food service workers to step one rate in the contract. For custodians, right now, that will be $18.15 an hour. For nutrition workers, that would be $16.15 an hour.
Do you mean long-term sub or just daily? But so is there a difference if they're a long-term sub? Okay.
So this is something that I really work on, just putting it in our head and making it up? So this is just the standard practice we're applying?
I think what I've discovered is that the standard practice isn't consistent in some communities. Some of them have spent the standard practice years while doing it on every school day and asking about codifying standard practice. So that we have something that's documented as opposed to relying on substitute rates.
I think that makes sense. I'll make-
Yeah?
I'll make a motion to codify the compensation rate for substitute custodian and substitute food service employees to step one of the contracts for compensation for their sub-rate. Seventy cents?
Did you say step one in there?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll send you that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is that it? Single item? Okay. Christine, do you have warrants for us?
We do not have warrants this evening, but we try to keep on the regular schedule. So we did have them last week. And 10 warrants totaling $583,423.29 were dropped off at the Halifax Town Hall. And Jessica Page wanted to sign them for us as the single signature person. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Okay. Correspondence and reports, I have none. New business, I have none. Future agenda items, I think we can skip because there's going to be a new committee. And honestly, do any of you have any subcommittee reports?
Yeah, I've been reviewing these, Matt.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that?
(inaudible) on Wednesday. So your official, like, joint meeting is on Wednesday.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock with the high school.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, I have not received any other update from any other subcommittee. Okay. Union 31 is meeting-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, 6 o'clock, high school. Okay? Yeah. Mr. Bowdre, are you speaking to item 10A? Who's speaking to that? Are you or is he?
The two of us right there.
Okay. Fire away.
Sure.
So item 10 here. This is for 23, 24. We are looking to add a second DLC classroom, Developmental Learning Center. As this year was the first year that we added the Developmental Learning Center. So we are looking to add another classroom for next year.
So the one that we started this school year currently has a cohort of 4th graders. So next year, they will be 5th graders. And the classroom that we're proposing is for elementary K-2.
K through 2?
K through 2, yes. So it's 3 grades. Then we have a cohort of 5 students from Halifax that are currently attending the KES program.
So I'm assuming you're going to need bodies to teach, to-
Yes. Yes, but to explain in terms of financing.
Mm-hmm.
Halifax is currently paying a tuition rate for those students to attend KES.
And transportation, I'm assuming.
And transportation, yes. So we're looking at the funding source to create the classroom here to be a return. You won't be paying your tuitions for Halifax K-2 students to go to KES. And there will be a reduction in transportation because they're not driving away to KES.
Well, and will they be around classmates from their town as well as our, correct?
My question is, first of all, thank you for all your work that you're doing to bring these programs to our district and especially in-house because I think it makes a big difference for our students on many levels. It also makes a difference in our budget. So we're grateful for that as well. Is this extra classroom contingent upon your ability to hire somebody to fulfill that position? Or do you already have people in the pipeline that you're looking to employ for that position?
It needs to be posted. And I believe we needed to have this conversation first, yeah, before we could post. The reality is, if we are not- We're in the same situation no matter which town the program resides in. So in other words, if our Halifax students remain at KES, we will need to hire another teacher at KES because the numbers are at a point right now that it's not sustainable. So we're either opening a third classroom at KES or opening an elementary classroom here. So either way, we will need to rehire a teacher.
Okay. So-
One teacher and two paraprofessionals. And then we'd also like to hire a .5 speech language therapist because this population of students, all of them require additional speech language services. And our current speech path in this building is pretty messed up. And we stretched her a little bit when we opened up the first Halifax classroom last year for those 4th graders. So when we do the math of the number of minutes that all of these students require for speech services, it's the equivalent of a .5.
Does there ever cross over, like, can the specialist there help with the other students in the building if needed or if there is space? Like, or can there be crossover like that?
Here, yes, absolutely, because it will be a Halifax program working with all Halifax students. So absolutely, this therapist and staff could work interchangeably anywhere they're assigned.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is not the case in Kingston because it's a Silver Lake program.
So they would be under Halifax and Silver Lake?
Yes.
And they would have regular access to adjustment costs already at this school site. A, brand. Nurse.
To Halifax.
Would this program also be open to tuitioned Plumpton children here?
That is absolutely something that we can consider, yes. I'd like to get the classroom started first.
Yeah.
But absolutely, if families would- Yeah, absolutely. If families at that point, I think we could kind of assess and see the size of the classroom and the cohort of students there and make recommendations based on that. And right now, Plumpton is paying a tuition at KES, which you are as well. So absolutely, the tuition can be charged back to Plumpton and have the student attend here.
So it's 2 and 1/2 positions? No, 3 and 1/2.
One teacher, 2 paraprofessionals, and a part-time speech therapist.
So even with all of the, and you may not know the answer to this, but even with all of those new hires and positions, do you still see it as a cost savings to the district? Or does it sort of wash out?
For this first year, I think it will wash out. I don't think it's necessarily going to be a cost savings. But again, we're watching the landscape and the number of students that are requiring a program design such as this. And I do think it's time to establish the programing here in Halifax.
I'm always for keeping the children here, even if it was, you know, not a cost savings. I'm just curious.
If we get students from Plumpton to come here-
That was my thought process.
It'd be easier for them to come here, at least until it's closed. Close it. Because it helps them to-
So do you need sort of our blessing or do you need an official vote from us to move this program forward?
I know we needed to reset to you to see if you were supportive of the program.
So a blessing is good enough?
Well, I'm gonna- I'm not sure exactly what the policy language says. Dave, do you have the ability to look up what specifically the policy says? I know that we need to bring it to you. With regards to a support, I assume that means a vote.
Okay.
But the language may tell us more.
We can take a vote just to- Be on it.
That would be helpful.
Just to ensure that that's-
Yeah. I think that's a safe thing to do.
Would one of you like to make a motion to support the staffing increases and the creation of a K through 2 DLC program here in Halifax?
Sure. I'll make a motion to add a second classroom of DLC for grades K through 2 and add 1 teacher, 2 paras, and a half-time speech therapist for, in order to staff the DLC.
Do we have any more questions on this before we move forward and vote?
How many students do we have in the 4th grade rollover room right now? I'm just curious. Currently, 4. Why? Oh, 5. Currently, 5.
So hypothetically, if there was a 3rd or 4th grade student that moved into the district or needed the services in the district, would that older end classroom be able to absorb that? Or would we be having another conversation about more staffing? I'm just curious.
It's a great question. We are required to follow the 48-month rule. So between youngest and oldest in a particular program, it cannot exceed more than 48 months of the age span unless we were to notify the Department of Ed, notify the families, ask for a waiver, and so forth. So we look to follow that 48-month. That's why this group of 4th graders that are about to be 5th graders, we need to have a separate classroom for the K to 2. And there are actually still a couple of 3rd graders that, because of the age difference, won't fit with next year's 5th graders, and they won't fit with our K to 2s. So they're actually going to remain at KIS for next year, for right now. So we're just going to continue to monitor the 48-month split. So the 4th graders, that would be 5th grade next year, 6th grade the year after that. Then we can have that teacher move back around and be prepared to receive the elementary students as they go up. So again, it's all about the 48-month split.
Okay.
So technically, eventually, it might be a better classroom to accommodate for the 48-months?
It depends on the age span and, you know, again, right now, we're doing it with 2. So in other words, at KES, we have a K to 2 program, and at KIS, we have a 3 to 6 program. And again, every year, we monitor that 48-month split to make sure that we're not exceeding it. And we haven't. We haven't needed to go for a waiver just yet.
Well, and for the interest of not moving kids around too much, too, I think it's nice if we can consistently have something here because it's pretty disruptive to late have them go back and forth. I mean, have any chat would be disruptive by that, so. I mean, the most we can do. And you have a pretty good idea of who's coming in generally for kindergarten because of the preschool program, I guess. Which then I wonder, is that something we could possibly bring over here, too? Because we pay tuition for that as well, right?
Yes, there is a tuition charge for all of our preschool students. And we are having those conversations-
Okay.
-to see how we can best serve the preschool students. Right now, they're all-inclusive in the integrated preschool program over at KE. There's a full complement of occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy. So it's making sense to keep them all together, but the numbers are definitely going up. And so we are reexamining whether or not we want to think about the space, the staff, and the supports for having Halifax preschool-age students come back here. So that's definitely something that we've chatted about.
Just I think the consistency is nice.
I think the families feel the same way.
Okay. Well, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dave, I guess she's in first.
Yeah. Yeah, let's get that ball rolling.
Has there been as difficulty time hiring as special as there have with other teachers? Just curious, like, totally.
Our struggle has been with regard to school psychologists. That's been the biggest challenge for us, and not just us. And Melissa, what did you just say to us in the hallway?
You brought that 65 older physicians in, preschool psychologists?
In the Commonwealth?
In the Commonwealth.
Wow.
Yeah, since December. So many districts are basing that, yeah?
Yeah.
Celeste teachers and more of this, I know that's been a struggle for us here.
So far, we've been able to fill all teacher positions.
Well, that's good.
So hopefully, we'll have this posted. As soon as- Low pressure, Dave.
It'll be posted.
Anyone fly?
So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Yulee.
Thank you. In your electronic package tonight, you have a copy of the financial. I was just going to try to get the highlights for tonight. There haven't been a lot of changes. There are deficits throughout the budget, which is, you know, we're in a pretty good place for May.
It's great.
Yeah. But most of those deficits will be absorbed within the categories easily, so there won't be a problem with that. One of the items I wanted to bring to your attention is the substitute line on page 1 of the detail. We have had some staff out on leave, so there may be a savings within the teacher's salary line, so that we may be able to work with that. And then on page 2, about 2/3 of the way down the page, you'll see in homeless transportation, we still have $211, but that will, that's crossing over. That will be a deficit. Keep in mind that we do get reimbursement, and right now, the Commonwealth is reimbursing at 100%, but it doesn't come into the following year. But knowing that's going to happen will make a difference to the town, which we have to, you know, deplete that line. And then, if you look at the bottom of page 3, this is under, this is going to highlight what Marie was just mentioning, the contracted services line at the bottom of the page has a significant deficit. And that's because we have not been able to fill the position. We've had to contract out for some of those services that would be done by that person. But if you look up just above, you'll see a significant surplus because we haven't been able to fill that position. So that salary line is available. And then, out of district vocational, we're going to have a significant surplus there. And I also want to mention that with circuit breaker this year, we will be able to carry circuit breaker over to next year, which we really struggled the past couple of years with some of the events and the dollars that we had to deal with. So next year, we will be able to carry circuit breaker over and still complete this year.
Nice.
So we're doing okay.
Nice.
Are there any questions? All right, let me know if there are.
No, we like, we like okay financial.
Yes, I know. I do, too.
I bet.
I've had some experience on the way. You can sleep tonight.
All right.
All right, you're up.
I'm up. So there's, there's 2 items under the district update. First, I'd like to thank our chairperson, Summer Smalling, for her years of dedication to Halifax Elementary Schools and Silver Lake Regional School District. We'll certainly recognize you at our upcoming Silver Lake meeting as well. But-
Thank you.
Summer has served our district and our school and has volunteered her time for the benefit of students throughout our community. And we have enjoyed working with her, and we are certainly going to miss her leadership and her- her dedication.
Like, don't make me cry. Okay, I'm going to miss my night off with all of you fine folks.
So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you to all of you. You've been a wonderful team to work for and with, and it makes this role a lot easier and more enjoyable when you enjoy the people that you're working with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Melissa because she is going to give you an update. If you recall, we talked about at our last meeting, Ryan presented Open Said as something that we were looking into, and participating in a, I believe they went to a workshop on it as well. And Melissa's going to give us an update on science materials and curriculum and where we stand now at this point in the year.
So I feel like every year, I comment on content area that I'm taking on. And we are, right now, here on the hard ELA adoption.
Thank you.
Working through that, working through some, you know, so we did some science review. So when we get to where our efforts are set in, it's time for us to sort of review and then sort of trying to cycle it in properly, though, where is ELA, where is math, where is science? And so this year, we had, the state's a bit of flux with science and sort of how they're viewing it, and they're looking to update the NCAS. And so it's time to move on from what we adopted in my first year here, which is 2015, 16 time. Because that curriculum was out of date, it doesn't match with the new things. But we also don't want to make any rash decisions because we know there's some changes on the horizon. So I gave, I put a document that's inside your folder, too, that kind of looks at like where we are. So we had adopted a interactive science back in 2015, and that is something to a new version called Elevate Science. And there's not a lot of interest in the teachers to continue that. But over the years, through COVID, we added some additional resources to fill in the need for something that's a little more interactive, something that looks better to be unpersonally. So we added Mystery Science, we added something called Newsela, we've used a resource called Generation Genius. And so I got together a group of teachers this year and said, "Let's make a decision looking at what we think might be the best recommendation or proposal for moving forward based on what we're currently using and what teachers are finding successful." So that's where you see that proposed for the startup resources, is that we would adopt Mystery Science, which was an independent company and has now been bought off by Discovery Education. It's super user-friendly, and it would help us to sort of try and create more consistent guaranteed science experience for all of our students given by. And also give us a little bit of flexibility, the full year subscriptions to resources so that as changes come about, we feel that we have the capacity to address them, to talk about them, and support that. So I just put that. We've also done some transition with 6th grade there, a start of a process of 3 years, going to a phenomenon-based science program that is very much in line with and will align with, hopefully, some work that's in hand to the middle school. And then also, we recognize that we need, anything and every opportunity we can give our kids for accessing nonfiction text. And so using a digital resource is an easy way to do that. So Newsela is a great resource. It's dynamic, it changes and updates, it adds more resources on a daily basis. Teachers can look by topic, they can also look by content area, they can use their standard. You can assign articles at a level. They're also getting into more resources, you can be able to assign things in different languages to begin, so a kid can read English, but also access in Portuguese. And over time, as kids read things, it starts to determine what their reading level is. So that then, if a kid goes and can pull an article, the teacher can say, "I'm going to autoassign this, and I want everybody reading the same thing." Or I'm going to let the program level it out so the kids put the content exactly the same. So every kid in the room is reading the same content, but that's something that hopefully they have access to. So trying to look at sort of how kids are utilizing technology and then balancing it with the Mystery Science piece, which is really interactive hands-on science. You know, I'm trying to reinforce more and more teachers that are just reading nonfiction, and then they're just doing science. And making sure that science is the do in part and that the content piece is helping them out. So this is sort of where we are right now with science and our focal point moving forward. And then the hope is to raise a bunch of teachers over the summer to do some work around alignment. We also use this information to help sort of take our report cards and make them a little bit more detailed in the area of science. So when we did the first report card edit years ago, we just wrote grade-level science. It's very basic because we were waiting for the new standards to come in 2016. They're out, they're adopted, we know them, we can kind of say this is what the expectation would be for our science, this is our science, life science. Also, that engineering design process that we're going to speak. That's me in a nutshell. Any questions about that? I know you have science background, Summer, so.
I just, I, my one comment was going to be that I really like that you're encouraging the, like, hands-on aspect of it. Because even as, you know, somebody with a science background, I think that if you just throw a bunch of nonfiction at kids, they're going to, like, it gets boring for some kids. You know, I even, like, wash out. But once you start getting your hands in it, and you can apply what you've learned in the text to actually doing it, it becomes, like, exciting, and that's sort of how you can, like, hook the kid to even want to read more, because then they're going to want to know why X, Y, and Z is happening. So then they're like, "Oh, if I find an article that talks about," you know, it'll, it'll link together better." So I like that this is becoming more of a experiment, hands-on-driven approach.
Yeah. They, we started our PD this year, and I gave teachers access to the test platforms, to the new NCAS that state is developing around science. And I literally had to stop because it was an integrated, like, activity with water ball, where you would set up different, like, filters and different tangles of how the water would go, but you were determining how strong they would be. And like, watching, sitting in a room of watching teachers play, I mean, literally, that's what I would say. And then, like, you had to do like 7 different trials, and then as you answered questions. But so that's the expectation, the content knowledge. You can Google, you can research, you can pull up what content knowledge you need, but you need kids to be willing to take chances. And so that's kind of, "Oh, just try this, see if it works." "Oh, different, try this, see if that works."
And why didn't it?
I have so much fun. I literally was like, "Okay, can we finish this?" And we talked about that, like, imagine if that was your classroom, like, that's what we want our kids to say, like, "No, no, no, I'm not going to revisit. I gotta finish this."
Yeah.
You know, so I think that we're making some strides, and I think this is a good move. I think this is a little bit of a right direction to give us flexibility so that we can continue to evolve over the years.
Nice. Thank you for all your work, too. I know you're, like, live, eat, and breathe this stuff, and you do a fantastic job. It's, it's a big job in the whole district. It's a big job. And to make sure everybody, all our kids are on the same page, to like, all go to Silver Lake and all mesh together beautifully, that's a tall task. So thank you for all your hard work. I can't either, but I'm kind of looking forward to it. Everybody keeps saying to me, "You're coming back," you know? I'm like, "Yeah, okay, let's one step at a time." But anyway.
So that's all we have for tonight.
Okay.
Other than I didn't, we added an executive session in case we need that tonight to discuss where we are with negotiations. But I also know we have town meetings, so.
Yeah, I think it would be good for us to, I mean, Lauren and I were on negotiating subcommittee, so we know what's going on, but it would be important to fill you in. It shouldn't take long if we want, just want to take 5 for an executive session. And, but before we adjourn for that, the next joint school committee meeting is May 10th. That's Wednesday. Memorial Day is May 29th. June 1st is an early release, K through 6, at 12:30. June 2nd is Silver Lake High School graduation, big day for our Lakers. And then the 14th is the last day of school. All the kids- Huh?
Carolyn.
I know. My baby. Think, I'll be crying then. But, and celebrating all at the same time. So, yeah, if one of you wants to read the executive session adjournment. So we're going to break for executive session, not to return to open session, so we'll adjourn from executive. She's so good at it.
Well, you have a skill. I'll make a motion to go to executive session, not to return to regular session for MGLC 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiation, parent, and teachers. An executive session pursuant to MGLC 30AS 21A 7 to comply with or- to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law approval at executive session minutes of 4:33.
Second.
Okay, so we need the roll call. Jess?
Aye.
Lauren?
Yep.
And I'm a yes. Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.